The hour has officially struck, so I will give just 15 seconds for all systems downstairs to make sure they're caught up with us. And I'll officially call the May 22, 2019 work session meeting to order. We'll let the ministry reflect that all of the board members are present, as well as staff members, and a very distinguished audience that I'm sure we'll be hearing from a little bit later. We have the minutes of May 8 before us, May 8, 2019. Would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Okay, seen none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Lisa, thank you as always. We have no public hearings this evening. We do have a few guests, and our first guest is regarding a streamlined process for massage therapy at 1801 Penfield Road. And I'll ask Mr. Costello if he would further tee this item up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. With us this evening, we have Megan Burke. Watch call up, Megan.
Welcome, Megan.
Megan has been operating, I think she was operating with Tammy over the years.
She's my laborer.
Yep. And what's happened is she's kind of breaking off a little bit. She wants to have her own identification on the property, so I told her she had to come in for a streamlined review process if that were the case. And then also, she's looking to do a sign on these, on the standard out with buck, freestanding sign, that would fit in with the same size as the others that are on the site now. Why don't you talk a little bit about your business? Talk a little bit about, you know, number of people operating, hours of operation, what you do, that kind of thing.
Sure. Yeah, so I own a resident massage. I work for myself. I've been there for about three years. My hours of operation are going to be changing a little bit. I have a settlement hold, and our daycare is a little wonky, so my schedule is just going to work with what daycare allows me to work with. So the hours that I put in the email will be different come August, and then will be ever fluctuating. Yeah, I have no employees, just me. I do Swedish deep tissue, chair massage, oncology prenatal, and myophasial release treatments.
So is it, Megan, is it safe to say that the, it'll be by appointment?
Yes, it's by appointment, yeah.
So which then gives you that flexibility, so that it's not necessarily a high, hard Monday through Thursday, as you indicated, 11 to 7?
Yeah.
That may vary, again, depending upon daycare, other things.
Yes.
But it is all based on appointment?
Yes, yeah. And I do have a website, so people can do online booking that way.
And you are working out of the rear portion of the building, right?
Yes.
And is the front portion vacant now?
Um, he's working on getting rid of everything. He's retired, and so he's working on selling out everything that's there.
So signage, where's the sign going? In the front?
Yeah, right in the front, yeah.
Well, he'll be taking his sign down before too much longer?
Yes. I don't know when he's taking his sign down, but you should...
He may have to make some room for you, because that is pretty tight.
I was gonna say, I was just looking at that.
But that's on Penfield Road. I wondered if there's one at Lotzley.
There is, but we're not putting any signs in the back, yeah.
Yeah, so I would agree, Cos, that this sign, you know, is pretty much maxed out, so there's going to have to be a little bit of, a little bit of give on that. It's not as simple as just adding the banner, as indicated, attached to here.
And just for the board's reference, Megan is one of two, actually. There's Elisa Scala, who also does foot and facial type.
Yeah, she's an esthetician.
And she'll be in, see, probably, she was going to come this evening, but she had a, she had a child issue as well, I think. So she'll probably be in at the next meeting.
Same location, yes.
Yeah, and she'll need signage, so I'm assuming that Langford's sign would have to come down to a company.
Some sort of reference.
To give them identification, so somebody can read and still meet code requirements on the site.
Is, is, he still operating?
He's retired.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I mean, so he's really, he's really not there on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis?
No, he's not.
There is no intent on your part or Elisa's part to move into the other building that's going to be vacant?
No.
Okay, all right.
All right. Do we, do we have contact information for him, Cos?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think it would be good to just follow up with that and address that. Okay.
Does the board feel this is, qualifies as a streamlined process?
Yes.
Absolutely. Get you off the running.
No, no hours on weekends, Megan?
No.
And, and obviously, none of us can predict the future, but plans for the future to look to grow the business at that location, have potential employees or part-time, full-time assistance help?
No. The plan is just to save me.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Sounds good.
Other questions, Ford?
No.
Stat? Anything we should be aware of that either is not in her, her letter to the board or we discussed tonight?
Well, the only thing I just want to make you aware of is the fact that this is a streamlined process, but you still have to obtain a conditional use permit from the board, which I'll prepare and send to you. Lisa will send you a bill for, I think it's $100. It's a one-type B that you'll pay, and then you won't have to pay again, so when you see that coming in, you'll understand why you're getting it, okay?
Megan, could you, what's the square footage of the area that you'll be using?
Oh, my goodness. I have no idea.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't...
I'll find out.
Okay, I think that would, I think that would be good, because in the letter that we sent back, I'd like to have that identified in that letter. And will you be sharing that space with anybody?
Just with, we saw the esthetician that will be coming in. We have our own rooms that we rent from.
I was gonna say, you've got your, kind of your own corners or niches.
Yes, and we share the front, just a little entrance, and then we have our own rooms.
Okay.
Do you have, are you there together at times, or is it just, she's there one day, you're there the next?
Um, she's by appointment as well, so sometimes we're there together, sometimes we're not.
Okay. All right. Other questions or comments, staff or board?
Nope.
All right, seen none. Would entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
This qualifies for the streamlined process.
Okay. And we'll ask Mr. Costello to prepare the conditional use letter to send out. They'll have the usual conditions. Let's, let's make sure that we identify square footage of that area. Hours of operation, obviously, will be flexible and by appointment, and then the sign as well, and then follow up with a current owner on the signage, so that it sounds like there's going to be a couple of potential signs that'll need to be at that particular location.
That's right.
Okay?
Yes, and I'll, I'll follow up with this with Langford, find out how quickly we can get that signed down, and then possibly put everything together with, with Megan and Lisa and come up with a package that hits the...
I think that would be good, and you could bring that in at a, you know, future work session, Cos, and we can memorialize that as part of that.
Very good.
Okay. All right, seen no further discussion, comments, and we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good luck. Stay, please stay in contact with Mr. Costello. He'll help you with signage, conditional use, permit, and those types of things.
Okay, great.
All right, great, thank you for coming in. All right, we'll move on to our second guest. Dr. Merkley is here requesting modifications to the approved landscaping plan at 2099 Five Mile Line Road. And Mr. Dr., welcome. Mr. Costello, if you would further update this for the board.
Bear with me one moment, please.
Yep, there are two sheets.
There's two sheets, both of them go together.
Yep.
There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Greg. The other thing I wanted to do is pass out this letter to everybody. Yeah. Yeah, this is for helping with this.
Great, thank you. PRC.
Finally, I want to pass some pictures around for you to take a look at as reference points as Greg's talking. Greg came to me recently, as you know, the board approved this project in 2017.
Right.
It's nearing completion. The structure basically is complete. The only thing that's outstanding at this point in time is the landscaping for the property. Greg came to me a while back, and suddenly he like to modify the landscaping a little bit, and he went through the rationales to why he wanted to do that. Initially, we went out with Bruce Soretsky. The landscaping modification was a little extreme, and after meeting with Greg and his contractor, and actually Greg was the one really not driving the process as much as the contractor was, but after that, he came back with a revised plan, which kind of discussed some of the things that we talked about with Bruce on the field. And I want to just kind of go through, and I'll let you talk about why you're doing it. The landscaping, as you know, is, it's an extensive landscaping plan, but a lot of it's driven by the fact that the building itself has a foundation, or concrete foundation wall, it's about five or six feet per grade. And the intent on the historic preservation board's part and the sports part was to have landscaping to kind of cover that area, so, and he recognized the need for that. You'll see around the building, particularly on the south side, there are two areas that he is now requesting that the flowers be taken away. You can see that there's a little bump out on the, on the basement, where there's a window well on each side of the, of the building. He wants to keep that open so that you can get some light in the basement area, some natural light in the basement area, so...
Light in the basement area, but also what we noticed is, even just being there a month, there's a lot of debris collecting in these wells, and it just allows us access to clean out these, those window wells, you know? That was the main reason, and just accessibility to that.
And the same being true on the two large plants in the front.
Two large plants in the front, which we didn't recognize before, are two large air conditioning units, that, that's where they would be. And so we're not asking to have the landscaping in front of those removed, because we want to hide them, but we're just saying that's where they are, and that it's kind of impossible to put plants right there, if there needs to be maintenance to the air conditioning in the future and stuff like that.
So if you were to pull those out a little bit in front of the air conditioner, so that you had room to move around?
We can move them, and then you can see from the drawings, there's also plants already in front of the air conditioning unit there. The main purpose for all that landscaping on the, on that north side is to, that elevation where you see the concrete wall. We're not trying to deviate from that plan, we're just saying that's where our air conditioning units are, we can't move them.
The, the other issue, there are actually three issues at hand, just to address the first. The second one, there are three trees proposed on the corner of Liberty Street and Five Mile Line Road. And I think what happened here is that you hired Wayside to draw the plant, and Wayside...
The contractor did, yeah.
The contractor hired Wayside to draw the plan up, and they drew a nice plan, but they did it in vacuums that related to our town code, and then also utilities and everything else that's going on the site. So he proposed three trees in the corner. As you know, we have a clear vision zone at these intersections to ensure that people can see around these plantings. There's also on the second page, there are some utilities, although I don't think there's any real conflict, other than the problem is, one of the trees is actually in the area where Greg installed the sidewalk, the other one's in very close proximity to it. And you can also see that there's a freestanding sign that you approved, which has been in that location since Bang started their business. That would block those, that sign. There's also a, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you're going to have your sign...
It's gonna be right where above the window well would be.
Oh, all right, so it's over here.
That corner, yeah, closest to Five Mile and Liberty, that kind of corner.
That helps a little bit, because then you, maybe you could either take a tree and move it in closer off the property line, or one of the recommendations of the PRC were to look at alternate plantings that were lower and did not cause some type of a visual impact to the signage or...
Right.
Or the property, so...
Just want people to see the signs, see where we're at.
Right. The last issue is the actual window well itself. From day one, the window well was proposed. This contractor would like to take that window well out. There are some pictures floating around as to what it looks like right now, and granted, it's not seated and it's not finally graded.
Right.
But the PRC really is strongly urging that the window well stay in place, because what it does is it brings the grade back up along, along the property, it makes it some continuity, and also, one of the things we're worried about also is the fact that right now, he has barely positive grade coming from the window out. They're concerned that over a long period of time, as we've always seen near basement walls, everything starts to sink a little bit, now you've got negative grade going to the wall, and then you might have some problems later on with that. So the key would be that if the window well were in place, and I know they are a problem in terms of, you know, clean keeping clean and keeping leaves out of them.
Right.
You might be able to get some screening or something like that, but the key would be to kind of keep that in place, to keep the grade positive all the way across that property. It also kind of helps a little bit with the landscaping, because then you can landscape around the, you can landscape around the actual window well without even worrying about installing things in the lower area, so. Those are the three comments I had. Anything else jump out at you, Mark?
No, I think you covered it.
So, supporting the removal of landscaping in front of the window wells on the north and south side to provide the natural light, so PRC's good with that. So we had, we had everybody pretty much around the table, at least when I stuck my head in this morning, you had everyone here, you had engineering, you had building, you had fire marshal, you had development services, you had DPW?
They weren't here this morning.
DPW, I didn't see them.
They were with me, so no.
Yeah. You guys, you guys were out because you had your team.
He was missing.
You had your team here.
We were at the DOT meeting.
And you had the DOT meeting, yeah.
Yeah, three others here today.
Okay. So, but the committee was, PRC was supportive of that. Supportive of the three trees moving that. And then, so the PRC strongly recommends the window well be installed to provide that continuity across there. And so, concerns, concerns on your part, Doctor?
Yeah, my only concerns as far as the large window well is like, there seems to be a good grade right now. I understand what the, what the PRC is talking about. My, my concern is, if you guys already met with the fire marshal, that is an egress window, and I was saying before, with the smaller ones on the, the south side, just maintaining it, keeping it clean, not that anybody is living or anything in the basement right now, but it is an egress window. My concern was, is there a safety issue if debris does build up there in the summer and/or winter or fall? Is there a problem with that? But if the fire marshals don't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, when, so when you're thinking, when you're thinking debris, you're not thinking cement blocks, stone?
No, no, I'm thinking snow, snow, you know? Right now, right now, in our, in our ones, on the smaller ones on the, on the south side, there's, there's just debris, cardboard, cups, I mean, just floating around, and I'm sure once landscaping's in there, it might be a little bit better.
Yep.
I'm just thinking long-term, you know?
Got it.
You know, long-term, I, you know, I may sell the building, and what if they put something in the basement and there's an egress window there? Is it easy to, is it easy to keep clean? You know, if the fire marshals don't have a problem with it, and they signed off on it, then I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Okay. So, board, other questions or comments? Does the board feel that the recommendations for PRC stand as proposed and summarized by Mr.?
I think the motion that we incorporate the, and adopt the recommendation of the PRC.
Is, is the idea to not only remove the trees, but not put anything in place? I mean, that's a pretty tight corner.
It's a tight corner.
It is a tight corner, and I don't want to see anything growing there that would obstruct views.
Yeah, and that's why it's a busy, busy intersection.
Flowers around the sign is about all.
Yeah, I guess if you were to do something, you know, to, you know, enhance...
Nothing higher than a tour.
...some corunnials or something like that.
Seriously, it's a tough area, so.
But I, I think that it would be problematic to put trees at that intersection.
Would, would not disagree with that. I would not disagree with that. Okay. So we have a motion on the table. Moved by Ms. Lenda to support these three recommendations that came forth from PRC. Any additional questions, comments, discussion, either from the board, stat? All right. Doctor, any additional comments that you would like to add to the discussion?
Be very clear, thank you.
Okay, great. Been a motion and a second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And move forward with, as PRC has recommended to the board.
Perfect, thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care, good luck.
Thank you.
You're in, you're in, and seeing patients?
That's our fourth week, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah.
So getting all the bugs out?
No, we've still got a couple of punctures left to go.
Well, good luck, good luck working that out.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Doctor. All right, we will, we'll move on to our action items. We have conditional use permit, this is for outdoor dining and outdoor music at 1300 Empire Boulevard.
Thank you, Tony.
Welcome, folks.
Hello.
Mr. Lucemus and Ms. Muso with us. We tabled this matter, they had a public hearing, I'm trying to think when they had a public hearing at this point in time. In any event, May 1st, which case they were tabled, pending some input. I know you look nautical, so they had, I'm gonna pass these around, they had prepared some paint chips.
What is your color, Ken, in your board?
No, no, I know you look nautical. So I'll let you pass those around. They have a sign proposal for the property, and I think you're looking to do three signs on the site, or two?
Yeah, there's the ones that pull off the front.
On either side, or in the one in the front?
There's those two on the side that I'm just gonna redo.
Those are the only two you want?
The ones.
So that's...
The front one, we want to do what we've done next door, it's just gonna be board lights up on it.
Yeah, that's fine. The reason I asked the question is because the two operators ago, LaSalle's Landing had three on the building. The previous, to you, the previous operator said, I don't want three, I need two, because when you're coming down the alley, you see me that way, when you're coming down the alley, you see me that way. By the time you get to me, you're not looking at the front of it, so. So I think that's your thought process on this as well? You want one on the east side and the west side of the building?
I was gonna put one in the front.
Oh, you want as well?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
So you're going back to LaSalle's?
I think, I think we need, we just need to...
All right. So that being the case, anticipating that...
Again, the question is what size, this is what we just wanted to...
I have the sizes for you, actually, thanks to Mr. Sevagis. The sizes that were permitted for that site were 15 feet in front, 15 foot width by 2.8 feet, 20 feet on the, on the west side, and 20 feet on the east side.
The size that are there acceptable, right? The size that are there acceptable, no?
Yes, yes, they're all fully compliant.
At the same time in the bay, we're just gonna replace those.
And I will, I will talk to you about that with your sign company to get the compliance with, with what was approved by the board prior to that. If it's amenable to that side package. So the intent would be to repaint the building?
Yep.
And I think it kind of matches your building.
With the peek-a-boo. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna mesh with the other building.
Peek-a-boo.
Can you say that 10 times?
Good chance to see anything like that.
Peek-a-boo.
So the whole building itself is gonna be repainted?
The lighter color is gonna be the base.
Okay.
Doc's gonna be the trim.
Okay, got it. All right. So, questions about, questions about the paint, the color, folks?
No, I do not.
No?
No, I like it.
So I want to go back to the signage, and I want to talk a little bit about, about the signage, because typically when there is three signs on the building, that, that requires a variance, and this board has the responsibility of enforcing the sign orders. So I just want to make sure with Mr. Costello that what's being proposed, what you're proposing square footage falls within the code requirements.
I'm just trying to cover the areas that are there.
Yep, understand.
Because the holes are there from the old sign, in the front.
All right, so to that, to that end, Mr. Lefallem, the board at this last meeting on May 17, 2006, when they first came in...
Okay.
They were allowed to have three signs in lieu of applying for, requesting a freestanding sign to identify the business. The building's so close to the property, I'm not sure you could put a viable freestanding sign anywhere anyways. And as a result, that was the rationale for allowing them to have three signs versus one or two, as, as others may have.
Okay, so...
So now we're looking at two building signs and one freestanding.
No freestanding.
No, no freestanding.
The one in the front is not freestanding?
No.
Is on the building.
When you...
I was gonna ask this around, just give you an idea of what was approved for LaSalle's when they came in.
So the three is in, the, the third one is in place of the freestanding sign.
Right, and that would be on the front of the...
It's on the front of the building.
And as have been indicated, if you take a look at that, it's kind of, yeah, there's holes there, remnants of the, the sign, you're looking to cover that up, and kind of freshen that up, if you will.
Yeah, that piece there has also, it was from the old sign that was made, though. They've never been done.
So there is nothing, they are not, they are not buried from the prior...
No, they're doing exactly what, not so much the immediately previous operator, but two thousand...
2006.
Prior to that, that's right, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that. It's the logic.
So the crab comes off. No crab?
There's really nothing there.
Okay.
No, we're just trying to...
There was never, you never allowed the mess.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that, that wasn't making its way in.
And so...
And then the square footage, Jim, is consistent with the square footage that was, that was there.
Does that keep some under the requirements for the area?
Perfect, perfect, okay. So that, that addresses the sign issue. So we got the color issue, we got the sign issue, we're working our way down the list. So the next is outdoor dining.
Yes.
And then the last one to talk about is the outdoor music component. That'll be the one that I think will gather a little bit more conversation. So from an outdoor dining standpoint, questions, concerns?
They've had outdoor dining, yeah.
Okay. All right, then that quickly then brings us to the music, and I think as we indicated at the public hearing, the music component is one that's the most sensitive in that area, because being around the water, the sound carries and travels, and we've had some issues in the past. And historically, the board has asked folks that have been looking for music to open, operate for a period of time, and then come back after, after they've been up and operating, come back and actually request the music at that point. So we did that for K2 Brothers, we did that for Murphy's Law. Is there anyone else that...
Well, not in that area.
Well, you did, you actually did it for Four Corners at...
Yeah, I was thinking, I was just thinking this area.
Murphy's, Murphy's had music there within the first year, and then were shut down.
They didn't, they weren't permitted to have.
That's why they were, that's why they were shut down, because they, they just went ahead and did without, and then-
That's what I thought.
Yep, absolutely.
Does outdoor music include like, if we hit XM radio and you wanted to play like a stereo through a speaker?
Music, yeah, music is music, and so, you know, some of the discussion we have is, you know, what type of music? Is it piped in? Do you have groups, amplification, you know, all of those types of things?
I mean, it's a small, we're more family oriented. We're not looking to have the, you know, big loud music and bands and stuff like that.
And playing in like that, that's a good, that's a good place, I think, to start, you know, as far as manageable.
That's what you've done with a lot of the others.
Yeah.
You'd probably be the quietest one of them.
Well, that's, that's good, that's good. Quietest and hopefully the most busy.
We live above there, so we, we heard, you know, the music and that.
We live on Orchard Park, right up on the top of the hill, so.
Got it, got it.
We're part of that group.
You're part of that group, so you've heard, yeah, okay. So, Board, thoughts about, about music at this location?
I, I think we should stay consistent with past precedent. I don't have any concerns or any issues if they wanted to do the piped in, kind of low volume ambiance kind of music to start. And then, after a period of time, you know, they can come back and talk about having some other-
If they have some groups or individuals to come in and perform and what have you, similar, we've had at a couple of other locations.
Yep.
So you're comfortable if they come in periodically for their three permits a year?
They're entitled to do that.
Under the, under the code, they are in fact entitled to do that. And so, you know, what happens is, is that everything is set by the first event. If you have the first event and there's no issues, typically there's an opportunity for a second, and then, under the code, the third. But if we have a, if we have a Zoo Fest, and we blow out the neighborhood and the group and what have you, chances are, there won't, there won't be the second event issued, permit issued. So, if they ask, by code, they're permitted to do that.
I don't like loud music anyways.
It's a sign of maturity, it's not a sign of age.
Might be these two years I have.
We've found some businesses actually end up, I think, appreciating having the wait time, because then they can more fine tune what they wanna do, or change up, you know.
Again, if we could have, like, some music just for the back for people eating their dinner and stuff.
Some background music and work our way in.
Usually can't hear that at table.
That sounds reasonable.
All right, great. Other, other questions or comments on this application, Board?
No.
Either the applicants or staff?
The only comment I wanna make to the Board and to the applicants is, back in 2006, it was a little more of a comprehensive application, because there were some site plan issues going on, when they were putting in the outdoor dining area. One of the things that they did back in 2006, as per your requirement, was to install a small hiking path along the property in the back. You may have seen it, you may not have.
I grouped it up nicely.
That's, that's one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention, to kinda keep that-
Because we actually wanted to come up.
Yeah.
We're gonna make it, it's been there, and you guys have talked about making that. So we actually have cleaned that all up.
Right, it's awkward, because he can go on his property, but he can't go the other way yet, because the other way is still a garden.
And actually, when the Pelican was there, I mean, many a people came in that path.
Very good.
They wanted to see that Pelican. Just happened to be behind our building for a while.
It was? It was on the other side?
No, it was right behind our building on that little point, which is now way underwater.
That was gonna be my next question.
Thank God I didn't lower the platforms on the docks, because they were under water. I was gonna drop my foot, and now they're about that far from going under again. Done a nice job, I think we're gonna break the record again.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, I think you're right, because I-
These poor people on the lake and sodas, I feel so bad for them. Their property base has dissolved.
Absolutely.
The property edge, it's cheap now.
The water is right up to the top of the-
Can't even sell them.
Right, pennies on the dollar. So I think earlier this morning, I get a feed, I think it's 2:48, 9 and change, and I think is what, is what it currently, what it currently is. And that was early this morning that I saw that, and it's rising, an inch every 43 hours.
Inch every 43 hours?
Yep.
And you're like, four inches away from peak.
Right. And, and peak is, right now, I think they move, even though they've opened up to allow more water out, I think peak-
More's coming.
Peak is, is still slated for about the 10th of, of June. So maybe we're still two weeks plus away.
When would you like to open?
Again, our goal is 1st of July. The liquor license is moving forward, and now that the roof has been repaired, so it doesn't leak like a sieve, we are now ready to start doing the painting and the subtle remodeling inside.
Got it, got it, okay.
I'll make a motion that we-
Okay, so, we have a, we have a motion, a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
With all the things we discussed about the, the music and the signs, and how they reflect the signs from LaSalle's here.
Okay. Further discussion, Board? Any further questions or comments for the applicant? Staff, any additional questions, comments, or items that should be added to the record?
Not everything I've asked of them, no.
Okay, great, thank you. And to the applicants, any additional questions, comments, discussion that you'd like to have with the Board?
We're going to be discussing that 30-day letter that's for-
Oh, yes, they have a 30-day letter that they're responsible for.
The waiver, it was mailed to yesterday? It might have been mailed to you yesterday, I think.
Great, so hopefully that's in your hand tomorrow, by, by the, hopefully tomorrow by the latest.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, motion on the table, unseconded, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the matter's approved. Thank you, folks, for your time, thank you for coming in. Good luck, we look forward to seeing a lot of activity in that area, right? There you go. That's even the real telltale, right?
I think there's a good chance of that.
That's gonna be very nice, well done, so.
Excellent, thank you, folks. All right, we'll move on to our second item, that's 88 Stone ledge Way. This was tabled from last work session, to give staff an opportunity, specifically Mr. Valentine, the opportunity to follow up and take a look at a couple of items. And Mr. Valentine, if you wouldn't mind, giving us an update? I see you've got some props?
Arts and crafts.
All right.
I have just a smaller version of it and a bigger one behind me, so. And our last discussion was kinda trying to quantify, first off, who was asking for, you know, having their backyard piped. And I've indicated those, and basically the green dots are the ones that I've received requests from. So initially was number 69, which we were talking about last week. And then 68 was his neighbor, and then I've got a request from 13, and I have a bigger sketch behind it. Point at it, so 69 is here on the east end, north being to the right of the page, so 69. His neighbor at 68 had indicated, and then I get a request from 13. So I pulled out the grading plan to look at, you know, at least the potential of wells that could be out there, and looking at where property lines fall, grades, you know, these all just fall off, so there's no potential on these, you know, it just sheets right out of the back of the yard. As well as these around it, here's the property line, where the swill runs down the property line, which is fine. These ones, there is a tree line behind it, in a fairly deep backyard, so I don't see a lot of potential in there. The potential I see is in this back corner here, yards get a little bit shorter, the tree line's not as substantial, and then potentially, 64, they portioned their backyard that extends beyond that line. So, have not heard from most people, haven't, you know, done an official poll, but just purely looking at the grading plan that's out there, just trying to quantify, is this out of 86 lots, is it 85 out of 86 that it's potential for? So that was kinda my effort to kinda color code what I thought may be it, just to kinda get an idea of how big of an issue or concern it is, that these are the three that I've heard from that, you know, had consideration and wanted to do that. Subsequent to that, I did pull up the agreement, I have two copies of the potential agreement that we were looking at for 82, at Milford Crossing. That one didn't move ahead, but that's what we're looking at with, with council, is kinda going through what the requirements would be for the homeowner, what the responsibility is, the responsibility to size it, have it installed, have insurance provide us with as-built, as well as acceptance that it is their pipe, they would own it, may be required to maintain it. So that has not yet been enacted, that parcel didn't move ahead at Milford Crossing, but that's the paperwork. So it's got names in there that, you know, are not specific to this, but at least it gave the Board a kind of the sense of the intent of kinda where we're going with council on where this might go, so.
And this is what you envision as a blueprint for-
This is what I would envision, is that each property owner would have to provide a map and sketch of where the pipe would go, the size of the pipe, so, you know, the engineering department could review it, make sure you agree with the size of it, you know, how it's gonna be laid out, you know, as well as, you know, enter an agreement with the town that basically, you know, that would get filed at their cost, the map would get filed at their cost, that they understand that it's a private pipe, they own it, they maintain it, it's not owned by the town, and when, and if there's issues, obviously we've got documentation, and we'll then run with the land that, what was it, 69, the future item? No, it's theirs, and if the pipe is damaged, crushed, then that takes away liability to us if, if there is issues to it, so they accept the liability of it.
And the benefit is obviously the town is aware that they exist.
Yeah, and as we talked last time, I can't say that we love it, but would we rather manage it and know that it's there and have agreements in place? Or, I mean, we get now, people go ahead and pipe things on their own, and they, next owner or neighbor comes, calls us and says, "Well, you guys allowed it." I don't even know what happened in that backyard, and obviously we're not in every backyard that's out there. I'd rather have an agreement in place, know that the pipe was sized properly, proper materials were used to install it.
Yeah.
So it's got its best potential of, of working properly, and then we've also got agreements in place that if the homeowner comes and says, "Hey, the pipe's blocked," or future owners, you know?
Neighbors.
The neighbors, that's, you know, your responsibility and-
Comfortable with, with that?
I am, and I-
More, more comfortable than maybe where we were?
And I appreciate the work that you have done over the last two weeks on this mark, because it's, you know, it's a delicate situation, and my, my, my chief concern is the fact that you have neighbors doing what is best for their yard with no regard to what is gonna happen to the next person's yard. And so, while I don't want every, I guess what it sounded like, it sounded like it was more of a prevalent issue within this neighborhood, that is, where the ink is still drying on the contracts, that sounded as if there was something amiss here, but, you know, you've done your work, and it looks as if it's down to a handful of homes here. So I'm more comfortable with making sure that the town is aware of what is when to be placed, and that it's not gonna affect future, you know, existing residents downstream or in the neighborhood, and that's, I think, most important. Because then it becomes a larger problem if another one neighbor is doing something to back up six, six of their neighbors, so. So I appreciate your work on this.
So, to move forward, would entertain a motion of approval?
So, let me just, so to move forward, the, the motion is that should a resident, or at least in this case, the resident at 88 still live away, they would have to enter into this agreement in order to have the piping in the backyard, is that, is that the motion?
To be approved.
Okay.
To be approved. We would allow them, we would allow them to do what they're proposing, when we heard that back in, I wanna say February timeframe. We're allow them, allowing them to do what they're proposing, conditioned on the fact that this document needs to be in place, signed by them, approved by the town attorney and signed by them, and then filed.
Before they do anything.
Before they do anything.
Okay. I will make, I will make the motion that they can proceed, consistent with the hold harness agreement.
This, or, or some-
Or some similar-
Modification, again, Dick has, I don't think Dick has officially signed off-
And that's why I say that it hasn't been filed, so I don't say it's 100% complete, but that's-
I totally agree.
That was the working document.
All right.
Now, is the Board comfortable with this being an administrative process?
Let's, let's get, let's get that, so, so Rob moved, is there a second?
A second.
Linda, Linda seconded. Okay, so the further discussion comes down, Mark, your question to the Board, are we comfortable in these areas here, in this particular subdivision? And then future items that may be similar, like what we saw over at Newberry Park, and maybe some others, or-
I've got one request at Kelly Ridge right now that just comes to mind, that, you know, they're looking for what the path forward is, so if, if it's something not out of the ordinary, they give us the sketch and go ahead with the agreement, is the Board comfortable with that being an administrative process through the engineering department, through PRC, if we handle that? And obviously, if there's odd stuff, more complicated stuff, or something much more involved neighborhood-wide, obviously we'd kick that back to the Board.
That was gonna be one, my one caveat, if you think that there's something greater than one individual home, then I would suggest-
If it's a reasonable thing, then-
Bring it back to the Board, otherwise, I'm fine with this being an administrative process.
I am too.
Okay, okay, thank you. Then move to second, any further discussion? Staff or Board, stand on those in favor, aye? Opposed? Carrie's, thank you. Move on to our next item, item C, 1068 Plank Road, the farmstead area, grade and fill permit, as you recall, two weeks ago, we had, Evan Schitt was in, joining us to go through, and Mark did a little bit of legwork from that, and so, Mark, maybe you could update us as to some research that you've been doing, and kind of update us from there.
Yep. So subsequent to the last meeting, as Evan provided, actually provided a while ago, I pulled out his letter of intent, originally had for the property. The Board asked for just an image to show what the current location of the farmstead area is, as well as where he wants to locate it. So the light pink on the second aerial photo shows where it is now, the darker red shows the five acre area where he wants to relocate it. If the Board's comfortable with that, I'll work with him and his engineer to do the final meets and bounds and file with that. And then, you know, showing, the second page shows the gravel parking lot, the Board saw that at the last meeting where he wants to put it, showing the aerial as well, as well as we're gonna handle this for your fill permit. So, there was some discussion about process, how do we move forward, scheduling a public hearing? So I went back and did some digging on how did we handle it for first Oak and Apple. That was kinda the first one we went through, that process, the Board talked about it at a couple of work sessions, you know, and then ultimately, came to an agreement on the location with the applicant, and then we basically just handled that by resolution. So we did not do a public hearing for the Oak and Apple farmstead area, we did public hearings for many other parts of it. Then I also pulled out Wickham's, which most recently came in, in an excuse area. The Board handled his parking lot as a grade and fill permit for the gravel parking lot, and then again, reviewed the farmstead area, agreed with the, the items in the farmstead area, but again, did not hold a public hearing for that as well, and I have the resolution dates, minutes and stuff from that. I just wanted to review that history or go back and make sure we're following the same process as we were done in the past.
No, I think that's key, and thank you again for doing that, Mark, because obviously we wanna make sure that there's the consistency piece, and not ask anyone to do something more than the previous. So, we do have some new materials that you passed out tonight, maybe between you and the applicant, you could give us a little bit of a rundown on that, and then we can talk about the next steps.
Yep, so you say, you know, Evan provided his letter of intent, you know, talking about the parking lot side, size, excuse me, where he wants to put it, you know, having it, you know, for use of the U-PIC part of it, and then as well as showing where the gravel parking area is. You spoke a little bit last time about, you know, why that area, and why it made sense to be with that.
Yeah, I mean, we're just looking to, obviously, it's, it's not our best land, if you drove by it right now, there's nothing on it.
Right.
You can actually see where the double gate is, and there's nothing on it, and the reason behind that is, 'cause it can't grow anything very well. And then, obviously, you know, just the, you also will see that we're bringing water across the street, there isn't water.
We saw that, saw that today, we're-
There, there isn't water on that side of the street, so, you know, we're working with the county, have already been approved to bring water, so it'd be closer to, you know, anything in the future that we might need, is obviously down there as well. Because we're hoping to irrigate our farm eventually for all of our apple trees, like, that's the goal. And, so it just, for us, it just makes sense. I mean, it just, you know, where things can be planted, you know, we only have 50 acres, and for a farm that's actually quite, that's very tiny, it's like tinier than tiny. So using all of our land, the maximum of our capability is really essential for me, becoming very efficient at what we do. And because I know that piece of land is just not a good piece of land, I would like to eventually put the parking lot there.
Evan, is your, is your intent also to get cars off the road, that park on the road?
You know, I'm hoping, you know, I mean, once one person parks on the road, it's over. I mean, I don't, you know, I was just, you know, it's funny, I was having a meeting today with, you know, a core of my people that work there, and a consultant that we've hired, maybe talking, or hiring someone just to work in the parking lot, telling people like, because they'll be parked a mile down the road, and there's like 10 spots in my, in my parking lot. You know, we're trying to become more efficient, we're, we're aware of the problem, we're, you know, we're dealing with it over time, another area that has nothing to do with this, but we're trying to install another fryer in the next year or two, because people are waiting for fried cakes, and that's, I think, what leads to the backup, to be honest with you, because they're waiting for quite a long time. Just trying to financially afford it, so, so in the next, I mean, there's, there's a lot of factors.
Add another fryer?
We're trying. So there's a lot of factors, I think that go into it.
It makes sense.
To be honest with you-
Who needs that parking lot?
Yeah, to this, to be honest with you, is hopefully to also help grow our business.
Sure.
I'm sure. I made no qualms about it, I'm looking to grow our business.
Absolutely.
You know, we're looking to new, do new ideas, it's almost like we're going to have two separate businesses kind of running, one is for the merchandise and the store side, and the one is kind of the farm, and right now, we've never really done anything with the farm, except we just harvest it and bring it across the road, well, that's just not the way that agriculture works now in a highly residential area, so we're just trying to grow our business, we are conscious of the parking issue, we are working on it eventually, like Mark said, we are hoping to move the barn that we actually have on one side of the road to the other, to free up more parking, and then also, so tractors and mowers eventually don't have to cross the road, we are conscious of the issue, it's just, there's only so much money per year, and so, we have it planned out, and we are thinking about it, we're not unaware of the issue, it's just going to take a little time, I've only been there for four years.
So Evan, this really doesn't have anything to do with this particular application, but I think it's more of a, I guess, of interest, as things evolve this way from an agricultural standpoint, I get that, I understand that, it's just the way customers are driving the business there.
Yeah, it is, yep.
Do you have any idea what type of damage that you might incur year-on-year to your, to your trees, as you do the U-PIC and things like that, because, you know, kids are kids, they like...
Sound like my father, because he does not want me to head in this direction, we've had a lot of discussions, and he's really supportive, he just says, you know, the...
And record show that he didn't call me to ask.
No, it's okay, I mean, if I can't defend that point of view, then I shouldn't be in business, one is you would, it is easier to just hire one person to pick the apple trees than actually have you pick, I know that sounds weird, you'd be like, no, you're, you're having people go out and pick your apples, that's not true, I can hire a picker, not monitor them, and they would blow down the road and pick ten bins, so there is going to be other things that require, there will be fencing on my farm to restrict where people can actually go within the farm, there's going to be people that are employed on purpose, like, in my mind, every three rows, there will be an employee to help people, to monitor people, to ask them if they need an assistance, you know, and then, I hate to be this way, people think U-PIC should be cheaper, it's not, it's not about that, it's not about picking thirteen bushels, you know what I mean, and getting it at a cheap price.
Right.
It's really not, I'm sorry, yes, it's the experience, so the price will also have to reflect that, the price won't be cheaper in my mind right now, obviously, I'm not that far into it, but, there's going to be a lot of things that go in it, and there might be some mistakes here, and, you know, but I know that the staffing will have to increase, I know that guidelines and rules, if we set expectations and we clearly communicate with people, I think it'll go better, we teach them how to pick an apple, we teach them the love and care, like, we have videos showing them how we take care of them in January, and then in March, and then, so they understand that this isn't just a single little process, they might be more respectful if they understand the hard work that goes on around it, so I don't think, what you're saying, it is an issue, it is, and then my job is to figure out how to handle that issue, and that's, and that's what I should be doing.
Well, thank you for taking a couple of minutes to go through that and go over that, because that's the first thing that popped in, is that, you know, you know, kids will be kids, and sometimes adults are...
I mean, one way that I am going to handle that, though, is to be honest with you, is a new business approach that we're going to be trying, and if this is approved, we're going to be doing a very small detail of it, is that we're going to have people actually adopt a tree for a year, so their family will own that tree for the year, so there will be more pride in it, and then they, we maintain the tree, we take care of the tree for them, they get invited back at different times of the year to teach the education part of it, they pay us an upfront fee, and then their family will have their namesake on that tree, like a plaque, and then they will be able to pick that tree, so now, they're going to be much more tied to us and to our agriculture business.
Absolutely, absolutely, great idea, I disagree.
You adopt a fryer?
I don't want to, I'm telling you right now, you don't want to, everyone thinks so, but when the day, when you're making a thousand dozen, the day becomes very long and very tiring, but very quick, so, when I first got there, we only had one shift, if that makes sense?
Yep.
Now we're up to two, and this year we'll be up to three.
Wow.
You know what I mean, because cleaning in itself, after you do a thousand dozen, you know, so we even, we need three shifts now, and if I have, you know, obviously, I'm meeting with contractors, and I mean, it's all happening inside, we're looking to eventually put in a fryer, and if that happens, then we'll be up to four to five shifts.
Wow.
You know, if you dip it in your coffee, you don't even have to put like sugar in your coffee.
So, I mean, we're, we're trying, we're aware of these problems, it's just, I'm still new into the business.
Well, I'll say, on behalf of this board and on behalf of the community, really appreciate your interest, energy, the things that you're looking to do, and I know, I know it's, you know, part of the business and part of, you know, the things that you do, but it really does have a very favorable impact, not only on our community, but many of the surrounding communities.
Well, for me personally, I mean, it goes both ways, I mean, we have a lot of community support, we love what we do, I have no qualms, I love what I do, my family loves what they do, so we also have a lot of community support, so it goes both ways, and we're thankful for that, we've been there a long time, we never want to take it for granted, and we just have to keep proving ourselves.
Good.
As I said in the prior meeting, I think it's our, your, our duty to fulfill the spirit of the Farmstead.
I think this is certainly keeping in that.
Yeah, to make sure that we can facilitate the maximum use of the agricultural land.
Yeah, I'm not trying to do anything that's not, I just, we're just trying to grow our business.
Well, I think it's also a very good safety improvement as well.
I do too.
The number of families and kids, I've seen coming over the crest of that hill, and you see little kids carrying a basket or a family...
I'm not going to disagree.
Trying to cross a plain road.
Probably won't be fixed in one year, I'm not, I don't want to make you sound like it's going to be fixed in one year, I don't want to think that...
But I think we understand.
It's going to take time, the parking lot hopefully will grow over time, as, I never knew how much a stone parking lot would actually cost me, but the goal is, is that, and it will all stay within, is that the parking lot eventually will grow, so it can accommodate even more customers and more cars, so parking will continue to be less of an issue.
Well, since you've got a great, great business model that you're working on and you're following, Evan, that will get you where you ultimately want to be, and obviously, to grow the business, to make money, to invest in the business, and that's really what the key is, what you're looking to do, so, we commend you for that.
I wonder if there's even an opportunity, aside from this, an opportunity, as I was, as you're hearing about this adopted tree thing with the rec. department or the Victory Garden, some sort of partnership?
The rec. department does come to us always in August, I do a tour for them, I do a live cider demonstration, and then this year, we're expanding it a little bit, where we will be doing also a farm tour on our wagon, so we did it last year, that was probably my most stressful week, because our cider room actually wasn't finished yet, and I guaranteed Penfield that I would be operating within five days, so, but we do something with the rec. department, they do something like behind the scenes of how it works, and I give a tour.
I'm thinking in terms of the, the adopt the tree.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The Victory Garden, have they got some scouts who are, you know, some sort of...
Certainly something he might be able to look at in the future, I think, sounds like your plate's pretty full with just the things that you have going on.
I like my plate full.
So, yeah, which is, which is great, all right, so, board, any questions, concerns on anything that's being proposed, ultimately, the parking lot, the Farmstead, and what, what is being planned for this area?
I'll make a motion to grant the request, set its entirety.
Okay, so, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion. Mark, you've got a few things that you'll put together...
Get some follow-up.
Based on and consistent with what we've done in past, in past applications, this won't require a public hearing before the board, it will be an administrative action that this board is taking this evening, and you will memorialize it with a letter back to the applicant, so that he has that for his files, and then, any, any of the paperwork from the Farmstead standpoint that we need to update, we'll get that taken care of and approved by the town attorney.
Okay.
And moved and seconded, further discussion, board, staff, from the applicant, Evan, any additional comments, input that you'd like to...
No, Mark and I talk quite often, so, he's very good at communicating with me, so...
Okay, so has been moved and seconded, those in favor, aye? Opposed? Okay, matters carried, matters approved, so, thank you, thanks for your, thanks for your time, Evan, your best to your family.
Thank you.
Okay, this takes us to provisional items, and we have a development of an apartment building, thirteen-eighty-four Empire Boulevard, information, Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Tony, this has been held matter now for almost a year, several months ago, the Danieli brothers came to visit you with the intent to demolish at some point in time the existing Mario's restaurant, and then replace it with an apartment building, and I did receive an application finally from them, it's taken several months working with them to put together an application, I do have a couple of handouts that you can, and I'd like to get them back actually if I could, because I'm going to show them to the Run Equipe Day Board, it's going to be tomorrow morning, but I want you to be aware of what they're proposing, it is a, here we go, there more, they are currently proposing a new building, similar nature to the ones that are there for South Point, which is now Water's Edge, you can kind of fan through it and see what's going on, the intent is to take down the existing structure, they're going to propose a four-story, ninety-five-unit building, the base story is actually an enclosed parking garage, the three stories above it are of residential use, it's a combination of studios, one, two, and three bedroom apartments, there are seventy-three parking spaces underneath the building, the parking area that's existing now in front of the former Basil's, the current Mario's, will stay in place as it is, the curb cut will remain the same, at this point in time, and looking at the plan, PRC started the review this, this morning on it, there is no encroaching at this point in time into the wetland area or the buffer area, it's pretty much staying as it is with the exception of the building itself, they are talking about some minor improvements to the path and walking areas on the property surrounding the building, there's no improvements proposed for the right-of-way or any change to the existing curb cut for the property, at probably close to what is there in terms of impervious surface versus green space area.
Is it taking away from any more of the, this stuff of the water?
If you go through that packet, towards the end, they prepared a visual analysis, a height analysis identifying how it fits in with relationship to the existing complex to the, to the east of it, sort of like...
Did you second to the last or, or last?
It is, yeah, it's one of them.
As you go through the thirty-five...
It might be this one, actually, it might be the second packet.
Oh, the second packet, was it?
You see it?
No.
No, I just stand there, they do have it here, I might can't find it.
Elevations, the south elevation, north elevation?
No, it's not the elevations, it's, there's a line running across the top of the...
You gotta give me a number.
I gotta find it myself.
I guess you're...
Oh, here it is, page three, so, page three.
Oh, that one, yeah.
And as you know, Empire Boulevard does go down the grade from where the existing buildings are, this will be lower than those buildings, I'm not sure to what extent is you're looking at that property, if you're driving by forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour, to what degree you're going to see any, any bay, it should not affect, you know, other areas around it and surrounding neighborhoods, they should be able to look down over it and see it, but, oh, the problem.
So, while we've talked about this, board, and, you know, it's been a held item for some period of time, would the board like the opportunity to take a couple of weeks to have some soak time on this?
Yes, and just, I'm curious, how is it going to be managed, is it going to be part of the...
It is not, it's going to be totally independent of...
Is it rental, is it all?
It's all rental, it's all rental, there is a breakdown in there of the units, in terms of number of bedrooms versus studio.
So I know you want this, I know you want this, these copies back.
Yes, I, we've already put them on our computer, we're going to send those to you like property, so you can all have them.
We send those out to the...
Yep, you may even get these again before we're done, once I get done with the Run Equipe Day Board committees.
But it's still like private, no more restaurant at all, right, Murphy's would be doing more?
No, Murphy's will stay in place, Murphy's is a situation where their lease will come up in about a year and a half or two, and their intent is not to do anything here until that happens, then they're going to make a decision as to what to do, whether Murphy's stays or goes, if Murphy's stays, fine, if Murphy's goes, they're going to move everything out of Mario's into Murphy's, and then they will take this down, this is not going to happen for another year and a half or two years, so...
I was just saying about CH Meadows, how, you know, Joey B's is over there, so you got a restaurant amongst this whole apartment kind of thing, so people do go in there, even if they don't live here.
It was one, it was one of my, it's kind of a disappointment, because I thought we would have more types of uses down there.
Right.
But then when you look all over the waterfronts, all over the North American coast, everybody's got a place to live on the waterfront.
You want to eat on the waterfront or live on the waterfront?
That's pretty much what it comes down to.
Yeah, I make a motion that we table this, continue to table this.
Hold. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, it'll give the board an opportunity to take a look at, in a little bit of detail, Jim, if you wouldn't mind sharing that, that information with the board, and then we can talk about, you know, the next back on, on the agenda.
You will need some time, it's, there's an extensive application, there's this traffic study, there's a stormwater report, it goes on forever, and our staff needs time to look at it as well, so...
Okay, all right, so it's been moved and seconded to show this as a table that were held item, see no further discussion, those in favor, aye? Opposed? All right, and then, before, we have one item, and I apologize, Lisa, if we could go back to monthly reports for the minutes, all the monthly reports are in, with the exception of one, that department had, was out of town, we expect to have that in our hands by the end of this week, so I just wanted to share that with the board, that all the monthly reports have been received as requested, with the exceptional one, there being no further business to come before the board this evening, the May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, work session stands adjourned at eight oh five PM, thank you to everyone that participated, thank you to Penfield TV.